Good evening and welcome to the Maple Plain City Council Meeting. It is Monday, November 27th at 7:00 PM and I call the meeting to order. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Frances.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda as is, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. First item of business this evening, as we can see there's many people with us tonight, so thank you for that, is our Good Neighbor Award presentation. The Good Neighbor Award is the highest award granted by the Maple Plain City Council to an individual, an organization, or a business in Maple Plain. The Good Neighbor Award exhibits a lifetime of service and dedication through volunteerism, virtue, and civic engagement and creativity to meet community needs. And I'm going to read this year's nomination form and then we will present the award after that. So this nomination was submitted on behalf of the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce Board. So there are four, five people on that board that submitted this nomination. Anne has been an agent with the American Family Insurance since 2011 and has been committed to this community the entire time. Her Maple Plain location opened their new offices on August 1st, 2022. Anne has been a good neighbor for numerous years and is generous with her time and resources. She has been a leader of the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce for years. She has held almost every leadership position. She was one of only four members who believed in and supported the chamber. If not for her dedication and belief in the chamber, it would have not, it would not be a vibrant organization today. She was a leader on the Maple Plain Centennial Committee and the Maple Plain Days Committee. Anne served as the Chair of the Highway 12 Construction Task Force, ensuring that people knew Maple Plain and Independence were open for business during both of the Highway 12 detours around town. When she built her new office, she included a storage space for the chamber. Anne is the first to offer a helping hand. She is also generous with her resources. She is not self-serving and is always looking out for the greater good of our community. I personally have had the privilege and the honor of working alongside Anne for many years and I echo all these thoughts and just thank you for your service and commitment to this community. On behalf of the entire council, it is my privilege tonight to present you with the 2023 Maple Plain Good Neighbor Awards. So if you'd like to come forward to the podium.
Congratulations.
Just thank you guys. So I am proud to represent and help the businesses within town and help be their voice to get things brought forward and just help the business community grow and sustain, sustain and grow. So thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And we're just going to recess for a couple of minutes and we'd love to do a picture up here with you in the council. And then if there's anyone else you'd like.
Mandatory?
Yes, it's mandatory. So Ian and guests, please, and anyone, please feel free to help yourself to the snacks and by no means feel obligated to state for the entire meeting, although you're always welcome as our meetings are on. Thank you. Go Vikings and congrats to Anne and American Family. Next item of business this evening is visitors to be heard. Any visitors? We will continue on with public hearing for the assessments and I will turn that over to our engineer David.
I believe Jacob gets this one.
This was for the certifying the delinquent and unpaid accounts of special assessments. If there's anybody here that wants to speak to the council vote, vote, speak now or forever hold peace.
And we need to have a hearing for that, so we will need a motion.
Motion to open up a public hearing.
Councilmember Fay.
I'll second that motion.
Second by councilmember Birak. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, the ayes have it five to zero. We are now in a hearing for the public assessments. Anyone here to speak regarding the public assessments?
I just have one question for Jacob. And that is, were you able to determine whether the surcharge and the administrative fee was added to the delinquent tax bill?
It is just the fee of $150. There is no 10%. I went back, I talked to Sharon and asked, and I did look back in 2022's when they were assessed last year and it was just $150.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Why doesn't it include the 10%?
I was told that we, that's just the way that we've got it.
Fee schedule from May of this year. Bear with me.
Okay, while you're looking that up, I will do two more asks. Anyone here to speak for the public hearing assessment? Anyone here to speak for the public hearing assessment? Looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Frances.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed at 7:07. And councilmember Fay.
Fee schedule revised 5/22/23 shows a delinquent bill certification, $150 plus a 10% penalty.
Okay, I was, well, the letters that we sent out just had the $150 fee on there. So I would think that at this point, we do it with $150 knowing that next year we need to pay closer attention to adding that 10% as well. We can't add it now because we didn't include that with the notices. We have until Thursday to certify this.
I would agree with that. We need to certify what was sent to the residents and the deadline is Thursday.
Which, which fee schedule are you looking at, John?
The one we approve annually. It's on the website.
It didn't change. It's been, it's been $150 with 10% penalty.
For, for unpaid bills, but then what's utility assessment penalty?
There's a, there's a utility, well, there's a, we are, we are certifying a delinquent bill, so the... These are utility bills. If utility bills don't get paid, there is a 10% late fee. But when we certify it, as you've got this accumulation of utility bills, quarter after quarter potentially, there's $150. That is the fee that we charge for, that is, basically covers the staff time, but then the penalty is the 10%. And the idea behind this is if you look at the year's worth of delinquent utility bills, there tends to be the same 18 or 20 people that are on this rotation annually. And I'm not quite sure why. If it's hardship, that's one thing. But I agree, if, if the letters going out didn't, didn't include the 10% penalty, there's $71,000 worth of delinquent utility bills. The city is giving up $7,100 in penalties.
But at this time, unless there's another option, I think that's the ethical thing to do.
I agree.
And the total, as of today, the total that we would be assessing is $73,732.58.
Did anyone?
There was four people that came in and paid today.
So the list from the packet, four have been removed?
Yes.
Okay. That's why the numbers don't match. Any further discussion? Alright, hearing none. I'm looking for a resol, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution 23-1127-17, certifying delinquent and unpaid accounts for specialist assessments in the total of $73,732.58.
So moved.
Moved by Frances.
Second.
Second by Birak. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving Resolution 23-1127-17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business this evening is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda tonight includes council workshop minutes from October 24th, council business meeting minutes from October 24th, council workshop minutes from November 13th, and council workshop minutes from November 20th. Tree trimming quote from CJF Services for $5,800. 2024 licenses for liquor, tobacco, THC, and massage. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Fay, second by Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item this evening is accounts payable. I will turn that over to Administrator Colander if there's anything that needs to be pointed out.
Bills for the city for November called $269,179.99 and the fire department, $49,452.88. I gave you guys the, the financial reports that were given to us. There are a couple items that I am looking into as far as we're over budget. If I can get to it real quick. I am looking at under miscellaneous, under administrative legal services planning. It shows that we're over budget by, we've spent $14,000, we budgeted $3,000. There was one item in there, the assessing fees was quoted in miscellaneous, we're recoding that to the assessor. So that'll come, so the actual budget for, still over budget at $3,110. So there's a change update there for you guys. There's a couple other things I'm kind of working on, our operating supplies in public works, our fuel in public works, and our street maintenance. And then our park operating supplies are way over budget by $2,800, so I'm looking into those still. So I have answers on those, yeah.
Thank you for that update. Alright, with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the city bills totaling $269,179.99.
So moved.
Moved by Frances.
I'll second that one.
Second by Birak. Any further discussion regarding the city bills? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next, looking for a motion to approve the fire department payables totaling $49,452.88.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Birak.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And then before us, we have the October city financials and the fire. I think you already hit on the highlights for those. Any questions? Okay. Let's move on to our new business then. With that, we will discuss our feasibility study for the 2024 street projects and I'm going to turn that over to staff.
Alright, thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Jacob's pulling up the presentation we'll walk through here. We've been discussing this here for quite a while and kind of chipping away at some of the decision points that we've had while we put the feasibility study together. We have that report final now and so we'll walk you through that tonight and then I'll look for, assuming you want to move forward with the project, some action at the end of the presentation. So just along the lines of introduction, I was back on August 28th when we were approved to prepare a feasibility study for 2024 improvements. And the project area includes some reconstruction area, Independence Street between Bud Avenue and Howard Avenue, Bryant Street and Wyman Avenue. And then we have some non-accessible portions of the project of Howard Avenue, cul-de-sac where we intend to do a Mill and Overlay, and then paving of the Rainbow Bow Park South Parking Lot. All of the existing infrastructure within the project area was evaluated as part of the report, which provides descriptions of the proposed improvements, the itemized cost, cost apportement, and a preliminary assessment roll. So along the lines of kind of why are we looking at these streets? There are several reasons for the need for these improvements. To begin with, we have limited as-built information for these, these streets and the utilities underneath them. But based on what we could determine, the earliest these, this infrastructure was built in the 70s and possibly earlier than that. So it's 50-plus year old infrastructure that we're taking a look at here. The existing pavements that, in most of the project areas, it's deteriorated to the point where traditional maintenance activities are no longer effective due to corrosive soils within the project area. The water main pipes have deteriorated to the point that they are fragile and subject to breaks. The water main on Independence Street, as we've discussed in the past, feeds the west, or the east portion of town. That's a six-inch line right now. We want to get that to a standard city size of eight inches as part of this project. Also then, looking at the sanitary sewer, we have mostly clay pipes and we have some block-built structures that we're looking to replace. All of the existing sanitary sewer is susceptible to infiltration at this point. And then lastly, Wyman Avenue is not currently built to a city standard. It is a narrower road than city standard and doesn't have curb and gutter or traditional storm sewer collection as part of that. So looking to make some improvements to that. Moving on to the assessment methodology that was used in preparing the report, consistent with city code and past policy or past precedent, we've used the 35% of all project costs that would be proposed to be assessed on the accessible portions of the project and that they would be assessed on a unit basis. Couple things to note with that, only the properties that are served by utilities in the project areas would be assessed for those utilities. We've talked about that in the past where we have, especially here on Independence, where we have properties that are actually served off the mains, off of Main Street. We have water and sewer running by those properties, but we're not actually providing service off of Independence. So those properties are only being assessed for the services that are being provided. Properties previously assessed on, for street and storm sewer on adjacent properties have been omitted from the assessment roll. Again, consistent with city code and policy, if they had been assessed for a past project, we don't assess them twice. And then properties that, we have a couple that would be potentially assessed for street and storm on a future project down in the south end of Wyman that aren't included in our assessment roll. The intent then is that the city has some additional costs associated with some of these unique circumstances in the project area. As directed by the council, the city would pay for the additional street width on Independence. This is, Independence is wider than a typical street, residential street section, so the city would pick up that oversizing cost. And then also the city is paying for the non-accessible frontage and project elements that include Howard Avenue, Mill and Overlay, that Rainbow Park, the paving of the parking lot in the south end, and then those non-accessible streets, stormwater, water and sanitary sewer frontages that we have along the project that the city is absorbing those costs into city cost. Just taking a quick look at these project areas, Independence Street again goes from Bud to Howard Avenue. You can see here in the gray the properties that will be assessed for one or multiple project elements. Oh, there you go. Moving on, then taking a look at those proposed improvements for Independence Street. This again is a full reconstruction. Water main and services will be replaced in the right-of-way. Sanitary sewer main and services will be replaced in the right-of-way. We're going to replace the existing storm sewer. There'll be the addition of some water quality treatment as part of the project. Replacing curb and gutter and then new bituminous pavement. And again, some city costs associated with that additional width on Independence. And then just quickly looking at the, kind of how the, the accessible area breaks down for the different utilities. So when you look at the water there, you can see on the south side of Independence, those properties that aren't gray, those are all properties that have water main on Independence that runs by them, but they actually get their service off of Main Street. Looking at sanitary sewer next, that similar where again, some properties there that are fronted with sanitary sewer on Independence, but the service actually comes off of Main Street. And then just storm sewer and street, some existing catch basins there and outlets for storm sewer that will be reconstructed as part of the project. Moving on to the Bryant Street and Wyman Avenue. Again, if you look at the overall map here, the properties in gray are the properties that are proposed to be assessed for portions of the project. For that portion of the project, again, full reconstruction, widening of Wyman Avenue to match the Bryant Street width. Water main and services will be replaced in the right-of-way, same with sanitary sewer main and services. We're going to replace the sewer on Bryant, the storm sewer on Bryant Street and then expand the storm sewer on Wyman Avenue. Again, the addition of water quality treatment and replacing the curb and gutter on Bryant Street and then constructing new curb and gutter on Wyman Avenue. Again, there is no curb and gutter on that street right now. And then new bituminous pavement on both of those roads. Again, taking just a snapshot of the water in the project area here, you can see there's, most of the project, or properties in the project area, south of the railroad track are getting assessed for water. There are a couple exceptions to that, but the majority get water assessment. Sanitary sewer, same scenario here with the majority of the projects being assessed. Moving on to cost apportionment, total project cost is $5.7 million approximately. The way that breaks out is it's assessments, a total $1.9 million, which includes some city properties and city property that is being assessed, the park here to the west of City Hall. And it also includes those properties that aren't being assessed for one reason or another along, that have frontage but aren't being assessed. The city has absorbed that cost. Streets, streets total $1.8 million that isn't being assessed, so these are all city costs now. Storm sewer, $500,000, water of $820,000, sanitary sewer, $628,000. And again, all adding to a total project cost of $5.7 million. Breaking that down further, if you just look at the city cost for the project, in total, it's $4.2 million in city costs associated with the project. That includes that $384,000, which is the city share that shows up on the assessment roll. Street portion is $1.7 million. The non-accessible project cost, which is Howard Avenue and the parking lot, again, $113,000. Storm sewer, again, $500,000, water, $800,000, and sanitary sewer, $628,000 approximately. As you break this down then, looking at the individual components that are being assessed, the street and storm sewer portion of the project is $12,321 per unit. Sanitary sewer, $3,702 a unit, and water, $4,883 a unit. So if you are being assessed for all three components of the project, the total assessment would be $20,905, again, as an estimate. Assessment type, again, just another breakdown. Again, you can see the city portion there, the $384. Residential is about a little over a million dollars. It's being assessed to 54 units. The school property here is $133,795. The church property across the street is $48,000. And then the Haven Homes, Elam Home properties off of Wyman and Bryant are the assessment, estimated assessment, $263,187. And then again, just those non-accessible costs, how that breaks down. Howard Avenue at $25,000, Rainbow Parking Lot, which we repaving, also adding curb and gutter around the edge of that, $88,000. As we talked about in the workshop, this assumes total reconstruction of that parking lot. We don't know that that's going to be necessary as we work through the design, but that's what we have in the cost estimate and the feasibility study at this time. So in conclusion, from an engineering standpoint, the proposed improvements are feasible, cost-effective, and necessary to maintain the city's existing infrastructure. A little more explanation on that, as we've discussed, the condition of the infrastructure within the project areas. Typical, given its age, material and environment, and at this point is in poor condition. Scope of work, the cost, and the proposed assessments are consistent with previous projects. The infrastructure maintenance at this point on these, within the project areas reactionary. Not much we can do from a proactive standpoint anymore with the condition of that infrastructure. So the things that we are doing right now from a maintenance standpoint aren't as cost-effective as they were in the past. And then improvements, all the improvements can be made using traditional construction methods. So there's nothing unusual here about the way we would approach being able to replace and approve this infrastructure. Again, consistent with the way we've moved forward with projects in the past. From a next step standpoint, laying out the schedule here, as we talked about in the workshop, we would be looking to mail out notices for an improvement hearing on December 25th. The week of January 1st and January 8th is when we would publish in the local newspaper for the improvement hearing. January 10th, we're proposing an open house where we can invite affected property owners in, have an opportunity to act or interact with them a little bit more on a one-on-one basis, a little bit more of an informal setting, answer questions, talk about maybe some property-specific things that might be on their mind or concerns they have. January 22nd then is when we're proposing that the improvement hearing be held. And March of this 2024 then, sign be done, would be done, open bids, so that at your April 2024 meeting, we could award the project. Construction, during the construction season, throughout the summer essentially in 2024, and then having a final assessment hearing in the fall of 2024. So with that, the action item that would be requested tonight, assuming you want to move forward with the project, I believe Jacob hopefully had a chance to give you a proposed resolution. a proposed resolution that would accept the feasibility report and order the improvement hearing for the project, again, for a date of January 22nd, which is your regular business meeting in January. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I moved through that pretty quickly because we've been talking about this fairly frequently and in detail here over the last month or so. This will essentially be the same information that we present at the improvement hearing, but we'll make a point to go through in a little bit more detail and make sure that, again, people that have questions, that we're doing our best to inform up of the project and explain the methodology and the logic behind the proposed project.
Mr. Martini, I have a question, more clarification. With Rainbow Park, the parking lot, that would just be the south parking lot, correct?
Just the south parking lot, yes.
Okay, just to clarify for people listening.
Yep, and I should mention too, with the estimate that is in the feasibility study, we did anticipate that we would lengthen that parking along the street to create another three or four parking spots.
That would be great, if we could do that. Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, so with that, I am looking for a motion to approve the feasibility study with the improvement hearing to be scheduled for January 22nd in resolution 23-1127-18.
I will make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Frances. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving resolution 23-1127-18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continued work on that, and thank you, Matt, for being here. All right, well, in our theme of celebrations and congratulations, we'd like to welcome League of Minnesota Cities Executive Director Luke Fisher and also Phil Kern, a League Board member and neighboring city administrator from Download to the podium, please.
That's great. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name's Luke Fisher, and I'm Executive Director at the League of Minnesota Cities. I'm really excited to hear, or to join you tonight with one of my colleagues, as the mayor mentioned, Phil Kern. He's a League Board member and one of your neighbors. I think you all know him probably pretty well, right? You should know that I was one of Phil's interns way back in the day, and I also had the privilege of having Dave Martini be a city administrator, or a city engineer when I was a city administrator in Watertown. So with Marvin here, Gary Corrells, your chief, was my neighbor. It sort of feels like old home week. I appreciate the chance to spend just a couple of minutes with you today. We're here to recognize Jacob for his service to the League Board and to do, before we do that, I thought it'd be important to offer some context about who we are as an organization because his contributions to the League were significant, right? So the League of Minnesota Cities is an association that represents 855 of the state's 838 cities. Less than 20 or so that aren't our members are cities that you wouldn't know. Our largest member is the city of Minneapolis. Our smallest member is the city of Berry. Anyone want to guess population? You can't guess, okay? It was in the orientation materials. Any guesses on population?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five? You're in the neighborhood. Any other guesses? Come on, Mayor.
Ten.
Ten? Mike, if we were playing Price is Right rules, you'd still be in, you'd be out. I'm sorry. Berry has a population of about 19 people. And they're located in like far west Minnesota, out by Wheaton. Sometimes when I say it's out by Wheaton, people say, where the heck is Wheaton? And then I say it's by Morris, and people say, well, where the heck is Morris? And then I say, well, you've seen the map, right? There's like a bump on the western side of the state. Berry is out in that direction. But as an association, we have a pretty important obligation and responsibility to help our members, no matter if you're Minneapolis, Maple Plain, or Berry. And when you consider that 40%, or 70% of our cities have a population of fewer than 4,000, cities like Maple Plain are really kind of home to us, right? You guys are our bread and butter when we think about who our members are and what councils look like, what cities look like. We think about places like Maple Plain, so we're really excited to be here. Before I turn it over to Phil to do some recognition of Jacob, I do want to recognize just one other person really quickly, and that's Julie. You've got to know that Mayor Julie has been just a tremendous friend and asset and resource to the League, to the Regional Council of Mayors, to the Minnesota Mayors Association, and a myriad of other groups. And Julie, I just appreciate the chance to call you a friend. I know that you always tell me the truth, even sometimes, you know, it's like, you need to hear this? But that's been an important part of me getting established in my role, and I wanted to say thank you to you for doing that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Phil to do the fun lifting, the exciting stuff and recognizing Jacob.
Well, thank you, Luke, Madam Mayor, Council. Good to be with you tonight. Thank you for having us here. I get the pleasure of recognizing Jacob. Jacob and I both served on the League Board for a year and a half together. We came on the board at the same time. Jacob was the representative of the Minnesota Small Cities Association. And for those who may not know, the League Board, we serve a very short term. Unlike some boards and commissions where people get on there and they're on there for a long period of time, your term on the League Board can range anywhere from one to three years. And typically speaking, when you're representing an association like the Minnesota Small Cities Association, you're only there for a year. Jacob did such a good job, he got to be there for a year and a half, and so kind of broke the mold there. I can think back to, in that year and a half, there have been a few projects that came forward where Jacob shared an important voice for small cities. One of those was the Grants Navigator Program. The Grants Navigator Program is a new thing that the League has put together to help our communities apply for big grants that are out there. As you probably well know, anytime a significant grant opportunity opens up, bigger cities, some of those cities to the east of us that have hundreds of employees, have people that can go fire off grants and get shots at all this money. Meanwhile, in our smaller cities, we've got two, three, four people that are just trying to keep the lights on and serve the citizens, and we don't have time to be doing that kind of stuff. And so the Grants Navigator Program was a nice, great initiative from the League, and Jacob was a part of that. He was a big part of that advocating for a streamlined process for small cities to be able to have that opportunity to take those shots and to try and get those funds to help our communities. I always appreciated serving with them, active, engaged person, somebody who wasn't afraid to speak up and always did so with the best interests of his community and of small cities at heart, but also in a fun and engaging way. So thank you for your service to the League Board. We'll miss you on the board, and certainly, congratulations on your new role here and wish you very well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Of course, I was just going to say, and we'll pause for a picture. I don't have my phone. You want it in front of Maple Plain?
I represent Mayor.
You got it, Rick?
Got it. You'll make me look skinnier.
Would you share it with me? This is bad as in.
One, two, three. I like it.
Oh, was it your phone?
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Have a great night.
Yes. Well, congratulations, Jacob, and thank you for your service. And thank you to Luke and Phil for being here as well. All right, next I'd like to welcome to the podium Wendy Lunsgaard. Wendy is the Orno School Board Representative who represents Maple Plain, so come on up.
All these people who were here, I thought were for me.
Oh, sorry. We have treats, we have treats. The Vikings are playing. It's a tough competition tonight for all of us.
It is. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to come and share some of the great things happening at Orno Schools this year. Last I presented was in June, and a lot has happened since then. Please feel free to stop me at any point. I just have some key highlights I'd like to share with you, but if you have any questions, please jump in. I'd like to start off first with a few points of pride for Orno Schools. We found out early in the school year that Orno High School, for the third consecutive year, was rated number one traditional public school in Minnesota by U.S. News and World Report, and number four of all high schools in Minnesota. But surprisingly, also this year, for the first time, Orno High School earned a place on the AP School Honor Roll at the platinum level. That is based on three criteria, college culture, credit, and optimization, and it's based on achievement during the last school year. So it's very exciting for the school. I would like to say a debt of gratitude to the community for approval of the technology last year. There are some real highlights that have happened, really tangible things that have happened with that technology money so far that I would like to share because it's really making a difference in the lives of our kids. So Wi-Fi was replaced and upgraded across all of the campus. High school seems to notice it the most, and the way we know that it is working is that the tech department is not getting phone calls. So that's a big plus. Cybersecurity has been a real high focus of the district to protect student and staff data as well as really sensitive district information. So they have upgraded their monitoring and their threat assessment systems to mitigate any risks. So that has really been, the technology level levy was a big contribution to that. And we know that cybersecurity more and more is becoming an issue, so we need to keep up with new technology. And finally, with the technology level levy funds, the district has really beefed up their crisis training and response in many ways. The first was they modernized their phone systems, and I don't know if I spoke about this before, it enables first responders to pinpoint exact location of, so if a phone call is made from anywhere inside one of the school buildings, that exact location and time can be seen by first responders. So it's not just, oh, it's in the high school somewhere, but they know exactly where. And the other investment was the Raptor Visitor Management System and Emergency Management System. The purpose is to expedite and streamline response. This has been a real partnership with Orno Police Department and surrounding police departments. And the benefit of this system is that it makes it so not every emergency is equal, right? So we might have a gas leak at the high school, but that doesn't mean we have to shut down the entire campus. And so it allows for some variability where we don't have to alarm everybody for a potential emergency. And so that's been a really great asset for the school district. There is a safety and security tab on the district website for additional information about the systems. A few more items. I know in the news, even continuing, news about SROs and school security, Orno Schools has a very long and wonderful relationship with Orno Police Department, and our SRO has continued and will continue the same level that he has been, and we have that commitment from the SRO as well as the Orno Police Chief. So we're very thankful, grateful for that partnership. Finances are great for the district. Unlike a lot of school districts around, the district received a clean audit and Moody's AA2 rating, which indicates a high level of confidence and prudent financial management. It's now time to rebuild the fund balance that COVID, that we had to eat into for COVID to allow for K through five students to be there every day and the others to be there part-time and have distance learning. So we're going to be really focusing on increasing that fund balance by being fiscally prudent and managing the money well. Enrollment is steady. We just had a demographic study, and so that's great. We've bounced back, again, unlike many other districts, so we're really proud of that. And that allows us to forecast expectations over the next several years. Last two things, communication is really important, and the website has a lot of information. If there is anything new and exciting happening, there'll be a pop-up when you go to the website, so you don't miss anything. Dr. Flesher sends out a monthly update, and in that, it has school board news, and it has some bullet points of what was discussed, as well as links to where in the recorded school board meetings those items were addressed. So you don't have to look at the entire school board to get to one piece that you might be interested in. So direct links are there. And the last thing is, this is a strategic planning year, and the district is looking for input from the community on the website. If you go on the website, it's a pop-up, and it takes you to the strategic planning page. There is a community survey that we would love. The district is putting together right now a strategic planning team to be working on that, and the input from the community would be very invaluable. And I believe that is it. Any questions?
You guys have been busy. Lots of good things going on. Any questions or comments for Wendy? We just value the partnership, and as I know, I think I said this every time you come, you can't have great cities without great schools, and you can't have great schools without great cities. So we truly do appreciate the collaboration and thank you for keeping the communication open.
Thank you for allowing me this platform. And if ever you have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out, as usual.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next in the business this evening is our staff reports, and I'm going to do those a little bit different this evening. We will receive in writing the city planner report, West Hennepin Public Safety, city engineer, Public Works, and the fire department report. So looking for a motion to receive those reports that were in our packets and we all read beforehand?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Frances, second by DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions for staff to bring back to our other staff members? Hearing none, all in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, staff reports have been received. Tonight, our current deputy assistant fire chief, Rick Dennison, is here, and while he's the current deputy assistant fire chief, he will be our incoming fire chief for 2024. So congratulations, I don't think we've seen you since that was officially approved, so on that new role. And I know you have some stuff you'd like to share for us tonight to consider and bring before us.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. City Administrator, thanks for having me. Very quickly, the year 2024 is a transition year for the fire department command staff. And as you pointed out, I've been approved to take the role of chief starting January 1st, so then that moved us into the next phase of our command staff, and that is the fire department has two assistant chiefs. And so those positions were both also up for open applications and to fill those positions, two spots, and they're labeled as, the second in command is the deputy chief of the fire department, and then the other assistant position that we have is labeled the operations chief. And so we opened up for applications for those two positions, two applicants, and those two applicants were Ed McGinty, who's a captain currently on the fire department, and then Brad Kouser, who currently serves as the operations chief and has for the last couple of years for sure. So those two applicants applied. The city administrator, Colander, and I sat down and had oral interview with them after reviewing their applications, and we both accepted them as fit for the positions for the assistant chiefs. And how the hiring process then works is, then it's left up to the incoming chief to appoint which people he wants into which positions. So I have selected Ed McGinty to serve as the deputy chief, so he'll be the second in command. And then Brad Kouser will be the operations chief, and he'll stay in the position that he's in currently. I didn't have conversation with Brad at the time that I decided to apply for the chief's position, just out of courtesy with Brad to see where he was at and what he was going to do with the position. As far as chief, asked him if he was going to apply, and he said that he wasn't. He said that he was hoping to keep the position as operations chief where he's at because he has projects in the works that he's working on, and he just enjoys doing that function of the fire department. So that helped me to come to my decision as to who would fill which roles. So with that, I would just, again, ask for your acceptance as to those applicants. So with that, I would just, again, ask for your acceptance as to those applicants, when appropriate.
Any questions for Mr. Dennison about process or anything else? All right, with that, I am looking for a motion to appoint Ed McGinty as Deputy Assistant Fire Chief and Brad Cowser as Operations Assistant Fire Chief, both beginning January 1, 2024.
So moved.
Moved by Francis.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the appointments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Awesome. So appreciate you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your service, and we look forward to...
Dennis, what's your plan now, then? You have a captain opening. So will you continue... You and the leadership team then work on the next level of leadership positions, captains and the lieutenants?
Yes. Now that we have this approval and things are good to go, it's my intention, and in fact, I've already talked to both of them and said, I want to get together this week and start working on that and kind of make a plan for where we're going to move up. And it will also have an open captain spot, but it also then... Yes, we have the potential to bring someone else up, and I'm excited for that. Because again, I think I... One of the platforms that I stood on in wanting the chief's position is need to get some more younger people up and involved in the ranks of supervisors in the Fire Department. And so that's my intent, and I think those guys are both on board with that also, is like to find somebody that's younger and that can potentially move up. And what it might mean is taking one of our lieutenants that's on the Fire Department now, moving them into the captain's position, and then that will open up a lieutenant's position, and that would probably be the promotion that we would make. So that's what I would see, but I've got two other people I got to talk to now, so...
Get to.
Due December 1st, yes.
So have you put it out there yet?
It has been out there, yes. Yes. Have you seen anything yet? Okay, then I will get on and remind people, so...
That's Friday. December 1st. Awesome. Well, thank you for your continued service and your willingness to lead in 2024 again.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will turn it over to Administrator Colander for his administrative report.
Thanks. Nothing too fancy, but we... The recodification that we're working on with MuniCode should be done by Friday. It was supposed to be done by the end of October. So I'll be following up with them this week to see, make sure we're on track. I have a meeting with the downtown developer I have in here that we've been working with, a developer on ideas and plans. We are meeting... Mark and I are meeting with them on Wednesday afternoon. Finance, staff is working on reconciling the counts for third quarter, and we are also gearing up for the 2023 audit. They came and did a meeting last Tuesday when we were at mediation. Records management project that we're going... Jill is working hard at transferring documents over to the LaserFiche. She's been doing an amazing job at that. Record licenses, we know we've completed and worked on. Kind of skip down to the stings. Gary did inform me that they did their annual underage stings for all agencies that serve THC, tobacco, and liquor, and everyone passed this year. So that's great. I am still working on the staffing restructure. I am hoping that Wednesday we'll be meeting with the Personnel Advisory Committee. We've had to reschedule it now, this is the third time, so maybe we'll get there. Baker Villas demolition has started at 1701 Baker Road for the five single-family homes. They'll do groundwork and that kind of stuff starting next year. They do need to have a conversation with the owner of that property because that Cavna Ventures is on the assessment. And I've always took it to understand that if your bills are not paid, you don't get permits. So I need to have a conversation because he has overdue escrow that he needs to pay us for as well. We have not filed the file plaque. It has not been picked up or filed yet, so it's on my list this week to get in touch with him and have a conversation to...
So when we signed a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, almost a month ago now.
Yeah, then I can't... Oh.
It's still sitting there. So we'll be having a conversation about those things.
Okay.
And the stings already gave that one. And like I said, I did not get a chance to review in full those financial reports, but there was some things that I wanted to look into deeper. So I will do that, and I will probably put it in my update, kind of what I followed in. Because there's a few things, it's just like, this doesn't make sense to me, so...
Jacob, did... When we last spoke in a workshop in regards to being able to extract this information from Banyan software, I believe it was?
Yep.
The Banyan or...?
Banyan.
And ABDO did some work for us a couple of years ago to make the process easier. Has there been any training? Has there been anything internal now that we're able to pull, extract this information?
So last Tuesday, when they were here, Bonnie went over it with Sharon. She just gave me Novembers this morning, which I'm just like, I don't know how you... It's current November numbers, but I don't want November numbers until November's been reconciled. So she's given me what they have so far, but I told her, I said, this is not... I don't want a financial report unless it's been reconciled. I need to learn how to do that yet, but she did show Sharon how to pull it.
Well, I think all the aspects, there should be cross-training in all the components. You should know, Sharon should know, Jill should know.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, no, I agree with... And I would have done it with them, but we were at mediation.
He lost a whole day in the office.
All I know is that...
I know. Thank you for that update. Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you. And I don't believe we have any action on yours. So next item of business is council reports and other business. We'll start with Councilmember Virek.
I got, because of mediation, I got to sit in on police interviews for officers, two new officers potentially going forward. So Watershed District, we're still working through finalizing where we're going to put all the grant money. Big coverage area, so maybe we'll get something out of it.
Can I ask you a question on the watershed? Is there a person that I could contact? Who would I contact? You know, the ditch that goes, so across the bridge, the stoplight down here?
Eighty-three Bridge?
And, yep.
Okay.
And you take a right, and then there's the ditch.
The creek.
The creek. Whose... Who do I talk to to find out whose responsibility is it to clean that creek out? Is it the city's responsibility, or is it the watershed's responsibility?
Or the homeowner. It's a...
Can you...
I can, I can... I can check and ask, and I'll certainly give you the information. I'll email you that.
And I was on watershed for several years, as was Mike. I think you'll probably find in some old CIP notes, there is... There is... There is a placeholder for the ditch cleanup in the watershed. Just never gained any priority. But there is something in there, a placeholder. No money has been appropriated, but you know something? If you're trying to find where to put grant money, you're on the watershed. Be the advocate for Maple Plain and get some of that grant money to clean up the ditch if you want it cleaned up.
Well, I've had some citizen complaints about people throwing things, using that as a throwing grounds for timber and yard trash and things like that. So I'm trying to just decipher, is that our jurisdiction? Is it their jurisdiction? Who's responsible to enforce that? Who's responsible to clean it? So I'm just trying to... That's kind of the reason that I'm asking is it's like, I don't have a clue in which direction I'm supposed to go at this point. So I just said, I'll look into it and I'll get back to you.
Fair. Anything else, Councilmember Virek?
That would be it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember DeLuca?
This has been a month of workshops and meetings with attorneys, mediations, and hopefully we're making some progress on some of those pending lawsuits. But it's been a very long month.
Yes, all right. Thank you. Councilmember Fay?
Well, a modestly compared to last month, busy month on behalf of the city. I attended Fire Commission a week ago where we discussed updating the Fire Department's recruiting and retention marketing plans for 2024 and approved it, and then reviewed some proposals on adding, replacing one of their fire rigs. I attended a very well-publicized and a wonderful, put-together Veterans Day event earlier in the month. It's a joint cooperative between the Orno Rotary and the Orno High School. Want to thank the mayor here. She did yeoman's work in putting that together. It was quite a success. Outside of several workshops and tonight's business meeting, continue to attend Rotary breakfast meetings. We had a social event a week ago where we got to entertain with some Rotarians from the Mountain West Tonka club at our local iron exchange. Nice event, well-attended. And attended the second service project out at Camp Inhopi. They're always in need of extra hands to get them cleaned up and ready for the winter. So that was... I ate Orno Rotarians. Were out there to give them an afternoon of work, so it was fun.
With the wood splitter.
With the wood splitter and the chainsaws.
We got to play with the tools.
Oh, boy. And all the fingers are there.
All right.
We wore our safety gear.
Good deal. For November, I attended Highway 12 Safety Coalition. There were representatives from MinDOT there that told us that there's grants available for roundabout Highway 12 improvement, and the group's response was, yep, same story, different verse. Show us what you're going to do, and let's move forward and stop talking about it. There's a section of Highway 12 that hasn't been improved. It's the last section, and it needs a lot of work. So we challenged the MinDOT folks to come back with an actual plan that we can execute. Attended... I also attended the Veterans Day celebration. It was very moving to see all of the young people that were in attendance take their hats off and place their hand over their heart as the flag was in procession, and then afterwards to come down and shake the hands of all the veterans in attendance. It was very moving to see that. Other than that, it's been workshops and workshops and workshops. And, oh, and West Hennepin Chamber meeting where we learned more about the housing market and how things are going. Been a busy month.
Yes, you're sensing the theme. There was a lot of workshops this month and a lot of mediation, as well as other meetings I was able to attend. Was able to attend the Minnesota Mayors Association Meeting in Wyoming. The highlight of that on the academic side would be the legislative update. Kind of a geek and like to learn more about those, and there was obviously a lot of additions this year and changes. And then on the fun side, we were able to tour Polaris, which was also educational, but was a very cool place and a neat thing to have the privilege of being able to do. Was able to attend two truck and treat events, the Chamber Truck and Treat Event, and then the two churches in town hosted a truck and treat event. So it's always fun to go to the community events and support those. We continue to meet for the future fire service meetings at 7:00 a.m. and are working towards, you know, different ways to collaborate and potential fire districts and what that all looks like for us and for our neighbors. Also with the Chamber, we did hear from the local realtor, the dwellings realty, and then we also had a mocha mixer at Haven Homes that was attended by other community organizations. So it was a great opportunity to network and show off Haven Homes a little bit. I was able to attend some of the police officer interviews. We are currently hiring for part-time positions and hoping to help our officers who have been working in officer short. So it sounds like we have three potential part-time officers now that will be moving forward in the process, so we will update you on that. Northwest Hennepin League, our speaker this month was from Three Rivers Parks and talking about the Trails Plan and how that incorporates to all of our neighboring cities and for us here in Maple Plain as well. Was able to attend the Downlos Senior Center Anniversary Celebration, which was a neat celebration with lots of their past mayors and all of the cities that helped to start the Downlos Senior Center. We had a Fire Commission meeting. Let's see, what else? Was able to attend the Orno Partnership for Youth. Administrator Colander and I had a meeting with the county assessor, so we look forward to bringing that information back soon to council and residents. Things look good for Maple Plain for the residents. Might be a little harder hit for our commercial industry, so if you hear things about that. Was able to attend the Chopper Power Sports Barat Friday and customer appreciation. So it was fun to go look at all their Polaris stuff right here in our little city. It's amazing the amount of inventory they had. I was like blown away by that. And then we did have a Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee meeting. That's the Hennepin County Board that I have the privilege of serving on, and we are working on strategic planning with a new leader and just relationships and with elections and changes. And so looking forward to moving forward with that group. And then something super exciting that I am always proud to share, and I think it's a great thing that our community does, is the West Hennepin Public Safety Police Reserves will be hosting their 43rd Annual View Santa Event. So that has been going on since I was a child. So it's super exciting. It will be this Saturday, December 2nd. They will... It's scheduled from 3:30 to 7:30. You can find it on our website, the police department's website. And they will be at Veterans Memorial Park from approximately 4:45 to 5:30. So bring your cameras, come see Santa, bring food for the food shelf, and come enjoy your neighbors outside with being together. Any other announcements or business to come before us tonight? Well, I don't know about you guys, but I want to go home and watch the Vikings, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Francis.
I'll second.
Second by Virek. Call in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the meeting is adjourned at 8:07.